Okay, are we recording Miss Connekey? Thank you. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Mr. Zarzaki, can please call roll.
All right, Ms. Chick.
Janet Chick, Northfield Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan, present.
Mr. Dwyer.
Amon Dwa, Northfield Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan, present.
Mr. Gustafson is absent, present. Mr. Aquinto.
Northfield Township, Michigan, present. Thank you.
Ms. Infante.
President, Northfield Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan.
Mr. Roman.
Here, Northfield Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan.
Mr. Gustafson. I believe he still signed with there. Zarzaki, present, Washtenaw Township, Washtenaw County, Northfield Township, Michigan. Mr. Gustafson. You're muted.
Present, Northfield Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan, 48105.
All right, all seven present.
Thank you. I make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Port.
Supported by Mr. Aquinto. Any questions, comments on that? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. We'll go call to the public. Anyone wishing to address the planning commission has three minutes. And I'll let Ms. Connekey monitor that.
Thank you, Chair. At this time, we'll have a call to the public for comments of agenda items only at this time. So if there's anybody wishing to address the planning commission, please use the raise hand function at the bottom of your screen, or if you're calling in, you can use star six. When I'm calling you, please state your name and address for the record before giving your comments, and you will have three minutes. Is there anyone wishing to address the planning commission at this time? Okay, Chair, I see no hands.
Thank you. So in that case, there's no clarifications from commissioners. Correspondence. We all received additional correspondence. Some of it was from prior to last meeting. It's all in the packet.
Excuse me. Can we just jump over number five?
Yes, I did, because it would regard any call to the public. Mr. Gustafson, it would be a response to a call to the public comment.
Okay, fair enough.
Thank you. So I'll receive that correspondence. It's available in the packet. Public hearings, there's no public hearings tonight. Reports from committees. Board of trustees, Ms. Chick.
Yeah, I'll apologize ahead of time. It's a little long. The board had three meetings since the planning commission met. So the board met April 13th, April 27th, and had a special meeting on May 4th. The board had a discussion on the manager job posting on April 13th. At the May 4th meeting, the option to use Michigan Municipal League to handle the search at the labor attorney's recommendation was approved. At the April 13th meeting, an update on 75 Barker wrote RFP was held at the April 27th meeting. A motion to approve the sale of 75 Barker to Chef J, a freelance chef LLC, was approved. Chef J would provide an eatery with a commercial component as well as cooking lessons at the site. There was a virtual meetings were motioned to continue through the end of the year under Washtenaw County State of Emergency. In the meantime, the board will look into the cost of offering hybrid meetings, allowing in-person attendance and the ability to participate for the public via Zoom when restrictions are lifted. The three marijuana businesses that were approved for a permit were given an extension of 180 days to comply with conditions before opening. And the three marijuana businesses that were tabled and put on hold were given another 180 days as well before disposition is considered. A discussion of hiring an in-house planner and zoning administrator was discussed. In the interim, McKenna will be conducting building inspections until an in-house inspector or independent contractor can be acquired. There was also a motion to approve the hiring of Don King as code enforcement officer. It was approved along with an approval to purchase a township vehicle for court enforcement use only. The agenda item to consider Chestnut Development Plan Unit Development Application for Preliminary Approval was tabled on April 27th to be brought back at a later date. It is expected to be back on the board's agenda on May 25th. The May 4th special meeting approved ballot language with one correction for the public safety millage renewal and increase. The renewal increase is to provide funds for fire protection and emergency medical services in the township. The original millage was at 2.0 mills and was reduced through Headley to 1.912 by August 2021. The request also to increase the millage to 2.50 and levied for five years. This will be on August ballot. And as a result of the closed session held on May 4th special meeting, the board will hold a public hearing for the Chestnut Development PUD application and preliminary approval consideration. Also, the board has directed the planning commission to update our zoning ordinance section on the PUDs to include the approving entity, which is the board, to hold a public hearing prior to acting on the PUD in order to comply with the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. Further, there was a request by Treasurer Zelenak that planning commission members could attend May 25th board meetings to answer questions and provide clarifications on conditions. It's all voluntary. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Chick. I watched the meeting. I believe it was Clerk Manley that asked if the PC might be able to be at the next board meeting, but there wasn't a vote. It wasn't anything.
There's no motion. It's not required. People can attend if they wish. They will probably be considered attendees as opposed to panelists.
Thank you. ZBA report, Mr. Dwyer.
I have a question that maybe Janet Chick can answer as a member of the.
I'm sorry. We'll go to Mr. Gustafson for any question.
Good question. If we attend, as planning commission members attend that next board of trustees meeting, and we would like to speak one way or the other, would we be allotted the same three minutes as a member of the public, or would we be given a different amount of time or a different category?
No, you'd be speaking as members of the public, and you would be given three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Infante. You're muted, Ms. Infante.
Thank you. I should watch the whole meeting because I watched a good deal of it, but the rationale for having us attend is what? How is it that they would like for us to? What would we contribute?
They, it was actually one or two. I think it was Ms. Zelenak, possibly Ms. Manley, as Mr. Roman recalls, that thought that perhaps the planning commissioners could comment if they were given, asked a question on if they needed any clarification. I think Ms. Zelenak was speaking specifically to conditions that were placed by the planning commission. So if anybody wants to come to the meeting and address those things, have to call to the public, they can. But I expect Ms. Zelenak or Ms. Manley will be asking questions of the commissioners if they attend, but you're not required.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, moving on, we'll go to ZBA report, Mr. Dwyer.
ZBA has not met since our last meeting, or in fact, this year.
Thank you. Anything from staff, Ms. Bird, if she's available?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bird. Planning consultant report, Ms. Connekey.
Chair, so I have a little bit of news. As Larry has found out, this is going to be my last planning commission meeting with Northfield Township. It's a bittersweet move on for McKenna, so my last day at the firm is going to be this Friday. So I'm working closely with John Jackson, our president, on a transition plan. Obviously, the timeline imposed by my new position is much tighter than I would have hoped for a transition. So bear with us. Vidia will be here next, at the next meeting, to help with our training session and move that along. She is more than capable, as are many other folks at our firm, of seeing that through. So even though our time was very brief, I really, I've enjoyed working with you all, and I wish you all really good luck moving forward, especially with this PUD. It's a really big effort. You know, it's the first in a really long time. I think the planning commission's comments and the work that you've done on it are really thoughtful, and they're really on point. They're on point to the project, which is what's important. And I think that, you know, as this moves forward, your input is going to be invaluable to making that project a real success, as well as all the other applications that come through. So I will be working with Vidia to make sure that training presentation, she understands all the content that I was going to go over. And I will be working closely with Mary and our staff as much as I can over the next few days to make sure everything gets passed off to somebody and picked up, really as seamlessly as possible. But I do not know, you know, I won't know for a few weeks who is going to be the main contact. McKenna will notify, probably Ken first, and then everyone else as quickly as possible once we have a transition plan in place. And that's all for me.
Bad news.
Thank you, Ms. Connekey. We appreciate your work here, and I'm speaking for all of us. We wish you good luck in your new endeavors and moving forward.
Good luck. Absolutely.
Parks and Recreation report, Mr. Aquinto.
Yes, sir. Thank you. The community boxes, the community garden boxes are full, and there will be additional service days needed there for continuing the fix-up in the community garden. Community park, the one-mile loop will be widened to six feet, and all of the debris cut down that has grown on that. Grass areas will be rolled and leveled, and soiled and seeded. And the bark park is available for continuous use and is definitely used daily by many four-legged friends. Thank you.
Thank you. And the Downtown Planning Group report, Ms. Infante.
Yes, the DDA met on April 28th, and it was a really enthusiastic meeting. A lot of new businesses coming into town, new ideas, but more than anything, huge celebration about 75 Barker and the culmination of quite a long saga with that building, and it sounds like a very creative endeavor, everybody was just thrilled. So other than that, again, one of the best comments I heard was from Matt Ritz. He said, "It's a good time to be in Whitmore Lake." I thought that was a nice way to put it, so cap that off.
Thank you, Ms. Infante. There's no unfinished business tonight. Move on to new business. Ten A is establish electronic meeting procedures. Ms. Connekey, is there? Would you like to say anything about this?
Chair, so I didn't prepare anything. I didn't know this was going to be on the agenda until pretty late, but I can go over kind of some of the things that we've been doing with other clients that are really important. I was just pulling up a memo that I sent around to some of my other clients kind of early on in the COVID process. A few things. You want your electronic meetings to run as seamlessly as possible, the same as you would your regular planning commission meetings. So keeping the same agenda format that's required by your bylaws, I think, is a good thing to adopt as part of your procedures. I think what it comes down to where the planning commission maybe could put a little bit more structure on this process than it's been running, aside from, you know, the state requirements that you let people know where you're zooming in from, beginning the meeting by stating your name and then your location, or setting some ground rules for public participation. And just some best practices here. Some of these we're already doing, but some of these we're not. The first is we need to think about the various different functions that Zoom has to communicate during the meeting as being speaking out of turn, as you would. So you wouldn't sit in a public meeting and talk over the planning commissioners as they're deliberating. Zoom kind of blurs those lines a little bit. Something we're doing that's good. We're setting this up as a webinar format. Members of the public are in here as attendees, so they can't just unmute themselves and start talking. So that's something that I think that needs to be kind of adopted as part of the electronic meetings procedures moving forward. You've disabled the chat function, which is really important. I haven't seen all of my municipalities doing this, but basically, if you have a chat function going and commissioners were chatting with each other in that chat, that could be construed in one way or another as ex parte communications that the public can't see happening about the project. So it's really important that we keep all of the dialogue about the project in this open format, as we are doing. The next, something I've been noticing the last couple of meetings, we have a Q and A function open. I'm not sure how the planning commission feels about keeping this function. I believe in Zoom, you can disable it if you'd like to. But the Q and A allows members of the public to just drop in their comments whenever they feel like. I think we need to decide how we want to handle those. Should we stop and pause and address each one? So if people are making comments in the Q and A during public comment, or if they're asking questions during public comment, do we want the planner to stop and read those into the record as public comment, or do we want to maybe shut that function down and say that the main way to provide public comment is going to be through the raise hand function, and then you get to address the planning commission? I think that's the main one that we have to kind of decide on. And then, the last thing is dealing with disruptive people. This is something we thankfully haven't had to deal with, but it sometimes happens where folks are, you know, they start to speak out of turn, disrupt the meeting, be profane, take over the screen, and show kind of explicit images. That happens more when you don't have a password-protected format and people Zoom bomb, but it can happen with general members of the public. So you probably do want to establish some procedure where you can mute people, you know, just say that it's okay if someone's being disruptive, that we can mute and remove their ability to talk. And then if they're being persistently disrupted, we can completely exclude them from the meeting. And we would reserve that, once again, to a security breach situation, I would assume, rather than a general member of the public. But those are kind of the big picture issues that thankfully we haven't really seen here with the Northfield Planning Commission, but should be part of the operating procedure that we put in place.
Thank you. So you're suggesting we address those issues on this discussion?
I think it would be good to at least discuss them and see where the planning commission is at on each of these things. Since there is no formal policy that we've put together, you know, we didn't really get a directive to put something together. Perhaps the best course of action tonight is to get the planning commissions feel on each of these things, and then we can draft something up with Mary and put them together. I'm not sure if there was further directive from the board on this, or if there's going to be board-adopted electronic procedures that the planning commission should be consistent with either, though.
Thank you. I'm sure there was, I don't think there was a directive regarding this. I think it was a matter of getting the resolution on record for the planning commission. Am I correct, Ms. Chick?
Yes, the board has not addressed any of these issues yet.
Okay.
So in that case, I think we would wait for the board to address those items first, and then we would follow. That's my opinion.
Yep, sounds good.
Okay.
So is the intent of this agenda item, then, for the planning commission to acknowledge the board's action to extend electronic meetings to the end of the year?
Yes.
Got it.
Okay, if someone would like to make a motion regarding this, you can probably take care of it.
So I will make a motion for the planning commission to follow the board's directive as far as extending electronic meetings through the end of the year. Also, we will take the issues that Ms. Connekey addressed, speaking out of turn, disabling chat function, disabling or deciding what to do with the Q and A portion of the Zoom and handling disruptive speakers to the board for their discernment and direction to the planning commission to follow those directives.
Port.
Is that too long?
I don't think so. Supported by Mr. Aquinto. Discussion on item? I do have some, okay, I'll go to Mr. Gustafson.
I do think this is an important issue, and there are lots of aspects of it that need to be considered. I don't have a fully formed opinion about this, having only thought about it now for the last 97 seconds, but I think the only time that we should be muting members of the public is if they were speaking longer than their allotted time. If somebody is a member of the public and they want to speak for three minutes, they can say anything that's legal to say. I think maybe the Q and A portion should be turned off, so if somebody wants to be recognized, they just raise their hand. Because I do think that perhaps trying to answer questions in real time could be somewhat difficult. There's a question now in the Q and A, is the chat recorded for the future? Does that become part of the minutes? So I think there are real issues to be discussed. I'm not entirely comfortable just waiting for the board of trustees to make a decision. Then follow. Maybe we can see what they have to say and then discuss it further.
Thank you, Mr. Dwyer.
So the recommendation to extend electronic meetings through the end of the year, has that come from the county health department, the governor's office? What are we following, or was that a unilateral decision by the township?
Ms. Chick.
Yep, it was a resolution from the Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners. We are not obligated to follow it, but if we don't, we still have to comply under the restrictions that are currently in place from the governor, and that does limit the amount of people that can attend in person.
Okay, so my only comment would be to that resolution is that if, at some point, it's only May, that directive is rescinded, we follow suit.
You want to make that an amendment to the motion, and then it'd be, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'd like to amend the motion to that point, yes.
Okay, I'll support it.
I support it. Ms. Chick supported that. Just to be clear, that was part of this package. If you look at the electronic meeting procedures of Northfield Township, the planning commission, item number one leaves it for the planning commission to determine it will no longer hold electronic meetings. So to me, that leads me to believe that if anything's lifted, and if the board of trustees decides to go to in-person meetings, I think we would follow suit, and I think that gives us our option in there. So I don't know if you still want to proceed with your amendment.
It is item one.
Yes.
Okay, I see that now.
Okay. And in the packet also, Mr. Dwyer, I think it was the bottom of the second page provided, it says, "Washtenaw County has declared a local state of emergency." And there was a, the third page being the resolution itself that was included in the packet, I believe.
Yep.
Am I correct? Okay. So would you still like to carry on with your amendment, or would you like to rescind it?
I'll rescind it. I think that's covered.
Okay, the second rescinds also?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So we still have the motion as Ms. Chick originally had, and I know Ms. Infante had her hand up. We'll go to her.
I was wondering if we would have the ability, as the PC, when receiving the guidelines from the BOT, to customize them to our own designs? I think there are some very good best practices out there regarding muting or regarding chatting. I serve on several other committees that manage chat so that the people who are on committee don't have to see it. Very, very distracting. And I just hope that we can have a little bit of control over the rules that we will end up having to follow if we find that the boards aren't exactly in line with how perhaps we'd like to run our work. I think that's a question.
That's a question?
I think it is, that we would, in line with this motion, that we would still have the ability to customize according to our processes.
I don't want to speak for Ms. Chick as a trustee, but I would assume that we would have the leeway to adjust any of the requirements, as we saw fit. I also think, I didn't want to get into full-blown discussion on this. I think it's just that the procedure being there and accepted, I think we should wait for the board of trustees to make their decision. And if they want to have a study, any kind of memo done by perhaps McKenna or whoever, that we could proceed at that time and carry on and follow suit.
Standards, I completely agree.
And I don't think it's proper that the planning commission just make any changes prior to the board. Ms. Chick.
I was just going to comment that the board can make their decisions on how they want to handle their meetings, and they can recommend to the planning commission. But I think part of that motion might be that the planning commission can customize it to their needs as well, so. Okay?
Thank you. Perfect.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Zarzaki.
The only other thing we may want to consider is in putting on this meetings procedures is who is going to run the actual call to the public. I mean, Ms. Conti's doing that right now. I'm not sure who the township trustees are using.
The supervisor.
And I mean, I'm sure that Larry doesn't really want to run some of this stuff. I don't know how familiar you are with Zoom, but we should also include who is going to be the official person running some of these procedures in our meetings, at least officially note that.
I think that could be done, and you are correct. I don't want anything to do with it, and I think we've been operating, functioning just fine with the setup that we had with the planner. Not only Ms. Connekey's done a good job, Mr. Lippens before did it. I don't see it as an issue, but we could state that.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm looking at. We should state that as part of the procedure.
I think we could take care of that when we have the actual when we have actual action on this. Mr. Gustafson.
I was just reminded at one point, and maybe Ms. Chick can mention this. I do think it's important that people identify their name and their address, but because of the peculiarities of both offices, you know, people who live in Northfield Township have an Ann Arbor address, a South Lion address, a Whitmore Lake address. It's not always clear that people who say they're in Ann Arbor are actually in our, you know, six-square-mile jurisdiction. And while comments from people who don't live here sometimes can be very helpful, they don't really carry as much weight as people that actually live in this township. And I'm not sure how we clarify, you know, who's got standing in these discussions, and who's, you know, signing a proposal from, you know, Bronx City or or a national petition, or other other things, you know. Is there a process for clarifying?
Ms. Chick.
Yeah, there's not a process, but in other instances at the board level, when we've had a number of speakers, we will ask the speaker, because they do have South Lion and Ann Arbor addresses, and if they actually live in Northfield, are you a Northfield resident? You don't have to do that. They really even, don't even have to respond, but it's helpful to us to know, you know, where people are coming from when they come to speak.
Yeah, well, you know, the things we've been discussing lately have generated a lot of interest in the public. Some in the pro category, some in the non-category, and it could be In some in the pro category, some in the non-category, and it could be, I think it's important to listen to what people have to say, but I want to make sure we're listening to people that actually live there.
Thank you.
All feedback, Ms. Chick can take back to the board and they, when they develop a, a more formal procedure, I believe. Anyone else? Myself, I have the opposite take on this. I think we're ready for, for in-person meetings. I, one could argue Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners overstepped their authority with the intent of Act 390 of nineteen seventy-six and are acting really in conflict with the state of Michigan State of Emergency Executive Orders, Proclamations, Directives, which were on, found unconstitutional by Michigan Supreme Court last year. That's just an opinion that one could pursue, so I will not be in support of the Zoom the Zoom or electronic meeting resolution, but I just wanted to clarify that. So with that, we have still a motion on, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Infante.
I, I would just like to add to that, that I believe a great deal of the confusion that comes about not meeting in person would be resolved if we had in-person meetings, so I really appreciate that comment.
Thank you, Mr. Iquinto.
I supported the motion for purposes of discussion. I am not in favor of the motion as well, and I have the same sentiments as yourself, Mr. Roman, thank you. So I will not be supporting, I, I will not be a yes vote on it.
Thank you. I, I would like to add, you know, it's a matter of of, of being, we're, we're working with the Township Board. Obviously, they may, they may have, have to take steps to have in-person meetings that perhaps are not ready for. And I can respect and understand that, so this is in the meantime, and I can, I understand it all. But my, my overall opinion is that it seems we have a Rogue County declaring a state of emergency when no one else in the state is, that's just my opinion. So anyone else? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Zarzaki.
Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Gustafson? Mr. Iquinto?
No.
Ms. Infante?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
No.
Zarzaki, yes. Five, yes, two against.
Thank you very much. Next item, new business B is the zoning administrators' quarterly report from January to March of this year, Ms. Connekey.
Thank you, Chair, I'll just go over this really quickly. This is Vidya's Q1 zoning administrator report this year, summarizing the applications that she's approved or denied. She's got thirteen residential applications that she approved recently and eight multifamily non-residential uses. Four of these are going to be coming towards the Planning Commission, so I do want to highlight them. The versus six, six, two, eight, Whitmore Lake Road, this is State Street Auto, this is currently on all of our desks right now. So we anticipate that this will be coming to the Planning Commission soon. And there were some issues that were flagged early in the fire department, so I, I, I'm hopeful that it'll be, you know, our, our next meeting after the workshop. But still a couple of things to work out there. Six, seven, eight, four, Whitmore Lake Road, this is J.J. Corin Crane Company. And this has been something that we've been struggling to get the applicant through the right procedures. But this will be a conditional use permit application and site plan when it does make its way toward, you know, to Mary, to process as an application. This is for a industrial office, but mostly crane storage, so we've been working through some, some issues with them as well as getting them to submit a proper site plan. And then we have two marijuana growth facilities that we are working with. So these ones, as, as most of you are all aware, except for maybe Mr. Gustafson, are a little bit more time-intensive for us to work through. We've done an initial review of the GT Excel, they need to do some substantial revisions, but otherwise they have all of their ducks in a row in terms of all the things we require for a marijuana application. With the key forms, we are still waiting on that one. And just to remind Planning Commissioners at this point, we're processing those marijuana applications in order, but we're still utilizing past precedent that we've used to process the other applications as well as that scoring evaluation. And so all of that will come to the Planning Commission at once with those reviews when they are ready. And then Vidya noted that we're nine applications that she denied and swore that need to be resubmitted. And she's done a handful of administrative site plan approvals and continues to assist the township supervisor with code enforcement duties. I don't know if there are any other questions or comments at this time on the report.
Any questions for Ms. Connekey on the zoning, or, yeah, the zoning administrator report? Seeing none, there's no action required, it's provided to the Board of Trustees also, so thank Ms. Krishnan for her report. And we will go to item C. Just what it is, I will make motion for a joint training session May nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, and suspend regular agenda for that meeting.
Port?
Ported by Mr. Iquinto. Any questions, comments regarding the training session? Ms. Connekey, do you have any? Any comment you would like to make regarding that?
So the PC bylaws state that the same agenda format needs to be used for all regular and special meetings. So I, I do believe we have to have the same kind of order of events for that agenda. But obviously, the only agenda item will be the workshop joint training session.
So you're saying we do have to approach it as a regular agenda? And put new, put the trainings, joint training session on the new business, is that what you're saying?
I think so, it just, and that's, that's the bylaws, it's, it's not required by OMA or anything like that. Unless the Planning Commission has done it differently in the past that I don't know of.
I, I believe we have, but that doesn't necessarily make it correct. So in that case, I will rescind my motion, Mr. Iquinto, you rescind the support?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I saw some hands up, but let's get a motion on the floor. I'd like to make a motion for a joint training session for the May nineteenth regular agenda.
Support?
Support by Mr. Iquinto. Now we can, I saw Mr. Dwyer with his hand up, and I believe, or Mr. Gustafson first, then Mr. Dwyer, I'm sorry.
I just was wondering what the scope of this training was there.
Sure, so we sent a proposal to the Township Board. As I'm trying to pull up the exact scope, but it's, it's basically we're going to be planning and zoning essentials for both the Planning Commission and zoning Board of Appeals, although we have invited interested board members as well. So our typical agenda, we go over roles and responsibilities of each of the bodies. The relationship, you know, what's the zoning ordinance, what's the master plan, what's the relationship between the two of them? We delve deeper into the specific activities of the Planning Commission and the types of reviews that come before you and the things that are required to conduct those reviews, we do the same for the ZBA. And then we talk about risk management. This includes good decision-making based on findings of fact and conflict of interest primarily, although we try to pepper in kind of topics and situations that are specific to the municipality. And then I'm also recommending a section on public notice and public participation, because I think that it came up recently and it might be nice to just kind of talk through what the state statute requirements are, what township's requirements are, and then what are some best practices that go above and beyond in, in that context? So that's, that's kind of our general outline right now for the training. But it is quite, we intended to be quite comprehensive, and then we, yep, covering most of the materials in those books. And then we'll have time for questions. And once again, we, we'd like those questions to be really specific, we like to tie to examples that you've had recently, if we can, speaking as hypothetically as we can, just to, to really, you know, drive the points home.
The training that I recently attended that was put on by the official chapter of the American Plating Association took place over several weeks. And it sounds like that you've just outlined it'll cover similar things that you did there. I, I welcome a refresher and opportunity to review the topics again. I'm just wondering how much, how we're going to cover it and without, you know, staying in our meeting completely. Unless you're, it's been a short version.
Okay, Mr. Gustafson, I'd like to know if you can turn your volume up in any way, or perhaps it's, you're connected, I'm not sure, but I can barely hear you. I don't hear so good to start with, so maybe it's just me.
No, I have, it's troubling, yep.
Okay, I will enunciate louder and more clearly, thank you for letting me know.
Thank you, just letting you know, Mr. Dwyer?
Is this training workshop closed, or is it open to the public and attendees, just like every other meeting?
Every meeting the PC has is open to the public, sir.
That's what I presume, but I just wanted to make sure, since it was training, that everyone could attend if they so wished.
Yeah, more on that, I believe their ZBA is also invited. Am I correct, Ms. Connekey?
Yes, the, the ZBA is invited as well as our interested Board of Trustee members. So it has to be a public meeting open to the public with that many officials present, absolutely.
That, that without question, but just to answer Mr. Dwyer's question further, it's not just the Planning Commission, it's the ZBA and Board members if they so choose, I believe. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion, Mr. Zarzaki, can you do a roll call vote?
Right, Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Gustafson?
Yes.
Mr. Iquinto?
Yes.
Ms. Infante?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes, passes seven, zero.
Thank you. Go to the next item, I'd like to make a motion of approval of the proceedings from April seventh in dispense with reading.
Port?
Ported by Mr. Iquinto, any questions, comments, or corrections regarding? I'm sorry?
I have a correction.
Okay, very good, Mr. Gustafson?
It's in page four, under new business. Third paragraph down on the right side. Roman said he agreed to finding the fact. Disagreement about the use of the, it should say, the site. She recommended that this resulting occurred, says the sin. That was just spelling mistake.
I'm, I'm sorry, it's the bullet points that you're referring to?
No. On page four of the minutes, under, in the section new business.
Right.
On the right column, the paragraph that starts, Roman said he agreed to finding the fact. But halfway down, it says disagreements about the use of the sin. She has recommended that the resulting occurred, that should be the site.
But given the expected community disagreement about the use of the site, okay.
It says sin, so it should be site.
Gotcha, I'm sorry.
That's exactly what I was.
Okay. Anyone else? I have one on, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Chick?
Yeah, excuse me, on the same page, the first full paragraph, it said, Chick said the future land use designation for this property has been in the master plan for twenty years. I'm pretty sure I said eleven years, I don't believe it was twenty. But we'd have to check the minutes of the meeting.
Yes, I, I agreed, I don't think you said twenty, but the exact years I'm not sure of, so we can possibly have that corrected. We'll, we'll make note, make note in the record that, to correct that. Anyone else?
I think you said twenty eleven.
Oh, yeah, because that's when it would have been, okay, thank you, thank you, Cecilia.
Regardless, I think someone can go back and check that out.
Okay.
I have one on the, on page five, the very last paragraph, more than halfway down. Roman said he will, for more masonry to building materials and more floor pan, floor plan variety, I believe I said elevation variety. So I'd like floor plan change to elevation. And that's the only thing I had. Anyone else? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Ayes have it, and with that, we'll go to the final call to the public. Ms. Connekey is running that. Everyone has a three-minute limit, and I will keep track of that and also cut in if that gets to be exceeded. Ms. Connekey?
Absolutely, and I just want to address a few folks that popped in the Q and A that said they were raising their hands and weren't acknowledged. If your hand was raised during the meeting after the previous public comment, that's why. Also, that public comment period was for items on the agenda, you can address the Planning Commission on any, anything you wish at this time. So we will start with Francine Dolan.
Yes, thank you for allowing me to speak, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can. Yes, thank you for allowing me to speak. I have a few issues, one is I sent a letter in that was not included in your pack. What, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, just state your name and your at, full address, please, for the recording, and I'll restart your time.
I'm sorry about that, okay, my name is Francine Dolan, I live at three fifty North Territorial, Ann Arbor. I am in Northfield Township, so I'm a member of, a resident of this township. As you were mentioning that that might be important. So I sent a, I have a couple of issues, I sent a letter into the Board of Trustees and also the Planning Commission, and that letter was not included in the packet. I'm not exactly sure why, it was sent in before other letters that are included in the packet. So I do think that process or procedure should be looked at and checked on to make sure that letters, when they come in, are included in the packet and the information that I included. I also would like to talk about the sort of tone of how we are interacting in this township, that there's generally a very negative tone between the people who object to the building of this housing development on the corner of North Territorial and Whitmore Lake and the, the Board of Trustees and perhaps, I don't know, some of the members of the Planning Commission too, I'm not sure. But I think that there should be some way that we come to some discussion about what the township really wants, and that could be that we take it to a referendum or we sit down and we work out, what is it that people would really be able to accept in terms of development? Because I'm not against development, I'm just against the type of development that's designed for this particular site. Because I don't think it's what's good for the township, I also don't think it's good for the land. So for multiple reasons, I think that it's the wrong thing to do. But there's very, very negative comments going on, and I'm hearing that there's sort of very negative comments against me as well. When I am not out there making negative comments about people in this township, at least not publicly, and certainly not privately either. So I don't think that's really appropriate for this to happen. And I think that the, the comments that the Planning Commission said last time, they were not included in the list of comments that were sent to the Board of Trustees, and I'm wondering why that was, why that, they were left off. And what procedure you have for making sure in the future that when the Planning Commission makes really good comments and really thorough comments, that they are definitely included in the report that's sent to the Board of Trustees. Because it's your job to advise, advise the Board of Trustees, but if your advice isn't being passed on to them, then that's basically a lost time for you. So that's what I would like to say, thank you for your time. Hello?
Julie, next. She said that was it.
Yeah, thank you. I finished.
Up next is David Gordon.
Hello, my name's David Gordon. I live on Helena Road. Uh, good evening, Chair Roman and Commissioners. I did raise my hand at the first call to the public, but was not recognized. I watched the April seventh Planning Commission meeting and saw the majority of Commissioners raise serious concerns that the Chestnut proposal as presented does not fit the master plan, especially regarding density. Then I saw the report from our planner, Ms. Conneke, regarding the Chestnut apartment proposal and found it to be shockingly biased, misleading, and incomplete. Unfortunately, I didn't get a chance to speak to this, nor did any of the Commissioners, because the next Planning Commission meeting was canceled. But before you voted to send the PUD to the Board with conditions, Commissioners were promised that this report would accurately convey the serious conditions you raised, and it did not. The report failed to mention, even that the majority of Commissioners said Chestnut's plan was too dense and was incompatible with the surrounding neighborhood. These and many other serious concerns were omitted. The Board made decisions subsequently based on that report, and now your wishes have failed to be addressed. Now you're being invited to speak at the Board's public hearing on the Chestnut PUD, but not even as a Commissioner, as a member of the public, which I believe is disrespectful. Uh, despite what Ms. Chick says, there was no vote or consensus by the Board on how you would be participating in the meeting. And I would urge Chair Roman to request the Planning Commission be formally invited to a joint meeting with the Board on this hugely important issue. Laws, procedures, and processes are the bedrock of a society put in place to protect its citizens from corruption and to ensure fairness. The system isn't working here. It's being gamed. You are not being, your wishes are not being considered. Please do something tonight to correct this and let the Board know the real position of the Planning Commission. Perhaps the Commissioners would like to comment also, or at least recognize the many emails and correspondence that were included in the packet on April seventh. Uh, were not included in the packet on April seventh. Um, I'm, I'm just kind of shocked by the whole process. I mean, the, my impression of that meeting was that the Planning Commission expected this to come back to them so that they can negotiate, um, and improve the plan that was presented by the developer. And now it appears that the Plan, the Board of Trustees, yet last night at a special meeting, did not vote to send it back to you. But instead just said, listen, we're going to have a public hearing, and that's it. Once the preliminary PUD is approved, there's very few changes that can be made. And I was under the impression that the majority of Commissioners on this, on this Planning Commission wanted to see serious changes to the density.
Mr. Gordon?
Thank you very much for your time. That's all I needed.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Okay, there we go. Um, up next is Karen O'Leary.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Karen Alexa, seventy two ten Whitmore Lake Road. I would live right across the street from this development. Um, one of the questions that I was curious about is if a cost analysis has even been done um, to put in such a dense development and would, who would be paying? Who's paying for this? First of all, I, I am completely against the density. I am for a subdivision. I've lived in Northfield Township for thirty-five years. When I first came here, we had three nice subs go in, the one off Posey and the two off of Barker and the mobile home park, which was, or Northfield Estates, which was considered our low income housing at the time, and I do believe they got a break for it. Um, if you realize how many units are in there, I want to say six hundred and fifty or close to six hundred and fifty lots are in there, and they're, um, many of them are empty. Um, so I just don't think that, I think that the community is under the assumption that if this development goes in, it's going to be this huge tax break for them. And I don't think that that is going to be the case. I think their taxes are going to go up, and that's not going to make them happy. Um, the community was thriving at one point, and I think it would again if we had subs. Put nice subs in. You're building right across from an area that is five acres per home. So all of a sudden, you're going to have eight homes per acre? It just does not make any sense. And the density of it is not going to be appealing. The traffic is horrid. I'm paranoid that they're going to drain my well, which is, you know, I mean, if you're putting in all those units, I am completely against the density. I am not against development. Put in a nice sub over there, separate it into three or five acre parcels. Makes sense. It would be a better tax base for the community anyways. It would bring in nice, middle-class families that would or would not, I'm not sure, go to Whitmore Lake schools or even shop in Whitmore Lake. Unfortunately.
One second, Ms. Alexa.
Unfortunately, there's just not public beaches in town. There's not a lot that brings us into town. And I don't know how to, you know, it isn't going to be, you know, unless you know somebody that lives on the lake.
That's three minutes, Ms. Conneke.
Thank you, Ms. Alexa. All right, up next is, uh, Suzie Winkowski. I'm sorry for that pronunciation.
Uh, no problem. I'm, with a name like that, I'm used to it. Um, it's Suzie Winkowski. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Suzie Winkowski, uh, five 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 eight Helena Road, um, four eight one oh five. Um, I've lived in this community for over thirty years. And, um, I'm very disturbed by the process that has taken place with the Chestnut Development Proposal. Uh, at the last Planning Commission meeting, there were thoughtful, valid, and serious issues brought up about the density and appropriateness of this development for the proposed site, as the previous speaker addressed. Um, I don't know what will happen to those issues that were raised. Um, has the window closed for them to be addressed? Uh, it certainly doesn't seem like, you know, having three minutes at a call to the public is going to allow the Commissioners to present those issues with the clarity that would be necessary. Um, this project is, is not a fit for the proposed site. It's way too dense. Um, and, uh, so I, I sincerely hope that the Planning Commission will be full participants at the Board meeting coming up on the twenty-fifth and will be able to give voice to their objections to this plan and to the conditions that they recommended, uh, for the PUD. So, um, I urge you to do all in your power to protect and follow the master plan and not allow the developer to dictate to us what we want there at that corner. Um, it's our township. Um, we should be in control of what's built. By addressing the issues, these issues that were brought up, we will have smart, thoughtful growth, not just growth at any cost. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other members of the public at this time wishing to address the Planning Commission? Yeah, up next is Steve Grono.
Uh, hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hi, this is Steve Grono, the petitioner, and I've been listening to the comments and just have a couple of quick, um, sort of informational purposes only. Uh, the four folks that have spoken in opposition, uh, all seem to be pretty united on the density issue. Just wanted to point out a really quick fact, and with respect, everyone. Um, of the seventy-seven point eight acres that's under consideration, there's two hundred and sixty-nine total units, which is three point four nine units per acre. The master plan calls for anywhere from four to six units per acre. So when I did the design and approached the township with the project, um, you know, the number could have been under the ordinance and the master plan up to six units per acre. I'm just over half of that is what we're asking for, so. I know that it seems like a lot of units. It's really not. The fact is, it's really actually, it's actually on the very low end of density for any kind of new development that you might be looking in a, in a district that has sewer and RUs and master plan zoning to the, to this effect. So I just want to point that out respectfully. The other thing is, um, with regard to open space, of the seventy-seven point eight acres, um, we have fifty-four acres, uh, which is open space. Uh, so the, the ordinance requires a open space of, I think it's between twenty and twenty-five percent. We are at fifty-four percent open space. Um, it's double the open space required, uh, under the ordinance and zoning. So I just want, those are just some points of clarification for people to ponder and think about. Um, I know it's been a long time since any new development came, but this is a very, uh, high-quality and affordable, uh, project for, for many, many people that want to live in a home, whether it's a lease home, uh, that's, that's called an apartment, or it's a lease home, that's, that's a home. It's still a lease home. It's a home. I think folks have a generally negative idea in their head what an apartment is. This Saturday from ten AM till noon, we are having a informational tour of our project under construction on M fifty-nine just east of Tully Road. I'll be there to answer questions and uh, provide details about the quality of the construction of these homes and for residents that live in our communities to be there to tell you what it's like to live in a Chestnut home. By the way, we almost have zero turnover. Once people move in, they stay. So that's all I had. Thanks for your time. Appreciate your considerations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Chair, at this time, I am seeing no more members of the public wishing to be acknowledged.
Thank you, Ms. Conneke. Well, we are on the agendas, comments from the Commissioners. We begin with Mr. Gustafson.
I have several comments, uh.
It is very hard to hear you, sir. Can you do something with your mic?
I will, uh, speak louder. Uh, I, uh, share some of the concerns that were brought up by members of the public regarding, uh, items that we discussed in our last meeting, uh, that were not included in the Planner's Report to the Board of Trustees. I, uh, sent that in an email to Ms. Conneke and Mr. Roman and separately to the Board of Trustees. So, uh, I, I am in agreement with Francine, David Gordon, Karen Alexa, and others. I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Gustafson, there's no motions during the call, during the comments. They're from Commissioners.
I would like to make a motion.
You can't make a motion during comments from Commissioners.
Why not?
It'd be out of order, sir.
I would, can you tell me why, where in law or where in the rules it says I can't make a motion?
I'm, I'm chairing the meeting, and I'm telling you that you can't make a motion during comments from Commissioners. And I would be glad to speak with you after the meeting as to how you have an item placed on the agenda for the Planning Commission.
Okay, well, then I would just like to go on record during my comment now that the concerns that were brought up by a majority of the Planning Commission, that you yourself, Mr. Roman, assured would be included as the conditions of approval that were not sent to the Board, I think it's very improper. You know, additionally, this Chestnut project was presented to us as, uh, referencing parcel B zero two one nine one zero zero dash zero zero six. But looking at their site plan, their third row is actually on another parcel. It's on B zero two one nine two zero zero dash zero zero two. So there are, the application was incomplete. It didn't, it didn't cover both parcels. And I feel like, uh, the preliminary approval that we gave, uh, needs to be modified because it's, it's, that's a huge mistake. You can't vote for conditions on a parcel when a project actually is on multiple parcels. I don't know if that was leaked from the applicant, the planning department, to the township. But I would, I would have included that. Last, last comment I will make, uh, I believe Mr. Grono was accurate about the number of units, the acreage of the, of the project and the number of units per acre. I think he's inaccurate about master plan, uh, allowing four to six units. And I think his clar, or his comment about fifty-four acres of open space, uh, might be accurate if you include the width of the roads and the setbacks and other things. Uh, and I'm, I'm not certain how he got to that number or how it's calculated, that that actually meets the definition of open space in the PUD, so.
Is that it, Mr. Gustafson?
That's it, and, uh, I, I look forward to meeting him on Saturday.
Thank you. Go to Mr. Dwyer.
Uh, two things. Firstly, um, I, I do believe that, uh, this development may have been conveyed to the Board of Trustees as being approved in concept or improved in principle by the Planning Commission. And I don't think that was the intent or case of the majority of the Commissioners. Uh, secondly, I'm a little concerned about one of the speakers expressing concerns about the tone of our elected officials and appointed officials. And I think we need to be cognizant of the fact that, uh, 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 constituents, our township residents have very serious concerns. And we should not be, uh, necessarily saying to them or taking the attitude that we know best, we're the parents, you're the kids. I think we need to, to really listen to what people are saying. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dwyer. Uh, Ms. Infante?
Yes, I don't know when we'd ever have an opportunity to talk about this, and I do wish that we had some role at the Board of Trustees meeting, because it's also a public hearing, which I didn't realize they were having a public hearing. I thought we were supposed to have the hearing on this, but apparently that's different. Um, because like the other Commissioners said, the conditions that certainly I expressly voted to approve the PUD on were not clearly conveyed at all in the Planner's Report. They're certainly clearly conveyed and captured in the minutes. Um, and I, I find that the process of not having had the opportunity to review the conditions as we should have at the meeting that was unfortunately canceled, has really created a situation where certainly I feel my vote is being misrepresented as supporting a project that I wasn't supporting. I think the Board of Trustees is getting some misinformation or some signals that aren't correct. Certainly, on my part, the density was an issue, which is why I voted to keep the zoning, the underlying zoning with LR to begin with. And I don't know if we go to the Board of Trustees meeting, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to answer questions as, as a resident. And I certainly wouldn't want to go to the Board of Trustees meeting and make comments as a Planning Commissioner, because that's what I would do as a resident. So I just feel like I'm in a situation where I'd like to convey information to the Board of Trustees, and I'm not able to. And I thought that was part of this whole process of the vote with conditions. And also, I would like to say two things. I really think we could have avoided some of this. I really think we could have avoided some of this. Having two public hearings on an item of great import, followed by two cases for discussion presumably with a vote on one evening's agenda was rough. And I think heading into the fourth hour, maybe some decisions were made to just move it forward, whereas perhaps we should have stopped, as I remember Mr. Iaquinto saying, should we have these conditions written down? And maybe we should have said, all right, we're going to table it until we have these in black and white, you know, written down in front of us. But we, I think, I definitely wanted to keep the door open. That was the point. So I don't know, I feel a little frustrated because I think this development is a great idea, but the density, you know, just doesn't seem to be appropriate to the area, to the surrounding agricultural zoning, five-acre homes. And it's, there's just seems to be no opportunity for communication finally. It would be great if there were some more communication, formal communication perhaps between planners and owners. And it's not our role, I understand, but some sort of dialogue about projects as they move forward. Because getting all of this information on a Friday before a Wednesday discussion of a four-hour meeting is just, it's going to miscarry somehow. It's just a process that's just too packed for clarity. So those are my points of view. And I will go to the BOT and respectfully respond to questions, but I really don't know what role I could play as a Planning Commissioner. I wish there were something formal. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Zarzaki.
Yes, I'm not going to continue the current issues. They've all already been stated and I agree with them. My only comment right now will be to Ms., I think it is Sutton, about her transmittal. It was received or sent, according to my emails, on Monday yesterday. And we do have a procedure where we have all of our stuff assembled by the following or the preceding Wednesday, reviewed and then issued to the commissioners. So we already had our packages and the package was already completed and approved prior to receiving hers. Her comments will be included in the next package to us. I just wanted to clarify that for her. Other than that, I'm not going to continue up at this point.
Thank you. Ms. Chick?
Yeah, there's a lot to comment, but I wanted to go back to Mr. Dwyer's thing. It was, it was not represented to the board at all that the Planning Commission approved the PUD because, number one, the Planning Commission can't approve a PUD. They can only recommend. And they understood that the recommendation was to send it to the board for their approval and to Ms. Infante's, I'm missing, I'm sorry. Okay, so to Ms. Infante's comment, the planning commissioners had every opportunity at that meeting after three hours of discussing everything at the final vote when the motion was made to approve sending it to, I'm to recommend sending it to the board for approval to say no. And then it would have come, there could have come back. So, you know, we can throw stones at people and we can say this didn't happen and that didn't happen. And I also wanted to say, I'm going to speak for Ms. Conneke, that if any of the commissioners have a question at any time, she has been open to any kind of requests for comments or clarification. Whatever questions you have, that would be the person to go to. So it's not like there weren't opportunities for people, commissioners to ask questions and speak to things. There was plenty between now and then. And as far as the commissioners coming to the Board of Trustees, remember, this is a public hearing. So you'll be asked at the public hearing, you know, is there, who wants to speak for it, who wants to speak against it, who wants to speak to it? As well as at the public comments. So there's opportunities to speak to the issue. I do also want to say, and this is totally different from everything we've been talking about so far, but we have new Planning Commissioners, we have new ZBA members. Some of our commissioners, excuse me, may not recall, but I need to clarify something. Hang on one second, I apologize. In regards to contacting our attorney, our planning commissioners do not have direct access to our legal counsel. Their concerns should be aired to the fellow commissioners at a meeting and a request for interpretation by legal counsel should come through a motion at the Planning Commission to the Board of Trustees via the Board of Trustees representative on the Planning Commission. It's bureaucratic, but that's the policy of the board since I think Mr. Iaquinto sat on the board. That, yeah, that you have to go through channels and go up the chain of command if you want to get in contact with the attorney. Every time we contact the attorney, it costs the township money and the Board of Trustees is, has a fiduciary responsibility to make sure that money is handled correctly. So it's just follow the chain of command before contacting the attorney. Thank you.
My concern was documented in the minutes.
Mr. Gustafson, you had your time for comments.
I look forward to a response from the Board of Trustees.
Ms. Chick, are you finished?
I am.
Thank you. Mr. Iaquinto.
Thank you, sir. I would like to address some of the statements. This development has three-point-four homes per acre, not eight. This does follow the master plan future land use. That is emphatically, it is emphatically following that. Just because individuals aren't reading it right or understanding it right does not make it so. It is following the future, the, the future land use master plan. At our PC meeting, there has not been any disrespect to anyone in the public, to any other fellow board members. Any, any comments have been dealt with with very much respect. I have seen every commissioner, including myself, writing notes, listening to the public that is speaking. So there has been tremendous respect given to each and every comment that people have spoken on. All procedures regarding this development have been followed very properly by our planners and by our Planning Commission. And it is very disheartening to hear that because people interpret things their own way, that they are stating that we are being disrespectful or that people are being disrespectful. Because I have not witnessed any Planning Commissioner being disrespectful to any fellow commissioner and/or anyone in the general public. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Iaquinto. My turn. And I have, I have a lot, but I'm going to condense it. Regarding statements about the memo to the Board of Trustees, I responded to two commissioners after the questions were raised. In my email, I referred back to the exact hour, minute, second of the Planning Commission meeting of April 7th. Apparently, you didn't go re-watch the meeting or apparently you didn't read what I sent you. On those three, you know, I had several points that I referred to. Two hours, three minutes, fourteen seconds into that meeting, we made clear that the Planning, the Planning Commission meeting, we are, that the petitioner already had, has allowable rights for what is proposed. At two hours and twenty seconds into that meeting, Ms. Conneke and myself clarified the process. And I asked if there were any questions. No one had them at that time. If you had all these questions that you came up with two to three weeks after, at that time, we would have addressed them. Unfortunately, all your questions came about two to three weeks after, for whatever reason. Due to unpreparedness, due to not reading, due to not understanding, I don't know. At three hours and thirty-nine minutes into that meeting, we went through the steps of the preliminary approval. And apparently, some of the commissioners still have not looked at the zoning ordinance. And I'll tell you now, if you want to look at section thirty-six dash six-seven-two-D of the zoning ordinance, that is the responsibility of the Planning Commission at a preliminary approval stage. There are four topics. Many other topics keep coming up. Those are the four topics that need to be looked at. So not subjectively, objectively, not due to the public opinion or not. Commissioners need to look at the facts, follow the ordinance. The zoning ordinance is not superseded by the master plan. That's what members of the public and obviously Planning Commissioners don't understand. The zoning ordinance is law. It's our local law. It tells you that what's permitted, what's not permitted. The master plan is a wish list of down the road. And of course, people do need to refer to the master plan, which we have in this case because this, this proposal fits what's proposed in the master plan, future land use map. So I'm rather offended by some of my fellow commissioners accusing me of not providing information when it's they themselves that need to do some homework. That's what I have to say about that. As far as some of the questions from the public, again, everyone seems to be bringing up, including commissioners, on the density. At the April 7th meeting, there was two topics. The first one was the density issue. It failed to pass four-three. The clarification on that was that, that I made to the commission was us not rezoning that to MR, which it actually put a cap on the density. Four of my fellow commissioners voted to not put a cap on the density. In reality, that is what happened. That is fact. You can go back and look if you like. You can claim that any other reason that you voted against it was due to density, you actually did the opposite on that vote. So I just wanted to make that clear to the commissioners and the public. Again, Mr. Zarzaki touched upon information. If it's, if it's passed the cutoff from the public, it will be provided in the next packet. It's a longstanding practice. Regarding the memo to the Board of Trustees, I went and re-watched our entire meeting, took notes, compared to what Ms. Conneke provided to the Board of Trustees. And I concur with her findings that she sent to the Board of Trustees. So those of you that are claiming it's not correct, please go back and watch the meeting. Please look at the first two items that were presented by McKenna to the Planning Commission because our conditions are included in those two items also. Unfortunately, you know, I could go on and on to talk about many of the, the specific questions, but the fact is that it's preliminary and it will be coming back for another review. Everyone seems to not understand that. So with that, I'm done with my comments. As unfortunate as they are. And our last item, let me see, let me find my agenda. This is announced the next meeting of June, excuse me, May 19th, 2021, and I make a motion to adjourn.
I support.
Whereby Ms. Chick. All favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I said, thank you. Good night.
Night.
Good night, John. Good night, Eamon.
Good night.
Hi, Julie. I'm very sad.
Thanks, Janet. Have a good night.
You too.
Good luck, Julie, and to you, venture.
Thank you. Okay, Mary, we're all set with the recording. I'm going to log off.